You ready? Now I don't see the agendas, I don't know who you know today is. Good evening, welcome to January 26, 2023 Planted Word Meeting. The first item on the agenda is Pine Island Real Tea LLC. 251 South Fair Highway subdivision, three lots. They emailed Naomi and asked to be continued until March 23. So if anybody would like to make such a motion? Oh, I need the point. Ray is the voting member, so moved. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? So that next hearing will be March 23. Do I have? No, I only missed one.
Yeah.
Second item on the agenda is Granite State Recycling LLC. 33 B&amp;B Lane, tax map 411, 195 industrial zone for the application for fourth for 8,000 square foot addition. Sorting recyclable materials. The checklist was definitely still right. I didn't see anything missing. So we need to make a motion to accept the application as complete to get the thing started.
Just to be crystal clear before we look at this. I use these guys, these are my trash guys. But I have no business interest with them other than I'm a customer of theirs, just so everybody knows.
So we need your motion to accept the application as complete.
Motion to accept the application as complete. I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sir.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Chairman, boards. My name is Matt Peterson, Keach Norsham Associates. Here representing the application in front of you tonight for the Granite State Recycling. Just a quick aerial, I think most of you probably know where this is, your main industrial subdivision in town. Off of Gould Road, just a little bit south of where we are here. Granite State Recycling has been there for a while. Has been in front of us board previously. The site itself consists of an existing building right now onsite that's approximately 10,000 square feet. Our parcel is located here, you can see the power lines that run through the property located here. If you guys turn to your existing emissions plan, I noticed you guys all had 11 by 17s. It'd be sheet one of five. As I said, this outlines the 10,320 square foot building as shown on the plan. The site itself is about 153,000 square feet or 3.524 acres. The PSNH 100-foot easement runs through on the more than part of our property. What we're here to tonight to discuss is sheet two of five. The applicant is doing well, would like to expand his business. Came to us about a year and a half ago to start this process. We came here for conceptual hearing back then just to talk about it. And then he's been working obviously with COVID and pricing and all that going through the roof. We've trying to been balancing on the costs and we're now at a point where believes he can get the building for a reasonable cost and we wanted to move this forward to the site plan. So what we'd like to do is a second building located in the southeasterly corner of the property. It'd be 8,000 square feet. This would be to continue the sorting of the recycling material that we utilize onsite. I'm not sure if you, I didn't know if you handed out the architectural plan that I had submitted. Do you each have a copy of that?
Yep.
So if you take a, just to give you an idea of what the building and how it's functioning. So the orientation of the building you're looking here in the corner would be coming in from BB Lane. And what the goal is of this building is that we'd have one, two, three, four overhead doors that face the north. The trucks would come into our site, back into any one of these bays here and dump the recycled material on the floor at this point here. At this point, they will sort it, the material. And you notice a door here, this elevation's a little off here. It actually comes in a little bit higher and goes down to that grade inside. The architect didn't understand that completely, but. So what happened is the 18-wheeler will drive into the building. It's going to drop down so that this here will be six feet lower than the floor that's here. That'll give them the ability to load the truck from the material that's here. They do have to lift it up and over, but it's not as high as the truck would have if they didn't have it flattened down from there. And then the truck will drive out the side and go do what it needs to do from there. So basically looking at cleaner operation than what they have out there today.
Can you explain that again, please?
It might be easier on the site plan. So the 18-wheelers are going to come into the site. They're going to drive into the building at this location here. There is a level 50-foot pad that's
I thought they were driving in here.
So they're driving in two places. So the material comes in first from up here, they back in and dump the material here.
Okay.
Then the next truck comes in here that they use to bring the material out. And that's where they'll dump this and then this truck will come out and make its way to wherever they deliver their materials to.
Okay.
So what it's showing is the right side elevation is really the side facing B&amp;B Lane, so that's almost like the front.
Yes.
This right here is the front, right there.
Yeah.
Yep, the right side view.
Yep.
Exactly. Again, what this accomplishes for us, it allows us to drop the material, sort it, get it out there on the 18-wheeler. We also looked at drainage that you've gone through here, there's the sites obviously mostly gravel at the current time. I'm not sure if you got a chance to drive out there before the meeting or not. Again, the aerials kind of outline that. But we had two points of analysis down here on the easterly property line, southeasterly property line. We have point one here and a second point here. As we all know with drainage here, we went from 14.04 in the pre to 13.97 in the post. About a .5% decrease, .5% decrease from that. And then the other one's 3.42, decreases to 3.36, which is about a 1.7% decrease. So not a lot of decrease, but there is a decrease on the site for what we're putting in here. You brought up the checklist, there was one waiver that was asked for on this and that was parking. And that is in your package.
Really, I missed it.
I was surprised. Read the waiver request into the board, but it should have a November 3, 2022. It'd be about the, that'd be the cover letter. We did check the little box on the waiver checklist there.
I did miss that, I apologize to everybody.
That's okay. What we're asking for is Section 11, general standards subsection C6, parking and loading areas. Table of parking, street guidelines. With anything that you do typically I have to give you a square footage of the building and the parking layout so we go with that building here. Again, where this is a sorting facility, building and not adding bathrooms or anything like that to it. There are no people that are going extra to that there. We felt that what we have onsite for the 10 spaces that are currently out front, that are paved and the ability of dirt everywhere if somebody needs to park onsite, that this was a reasonable request of a waiver to not outline the 8,000 square foot and the number of parking spaces and paving area for those spaces. It just doesn't seem to work for the use that we're doing here. So that's our reasoning for the waiver request.
How many, how many employees do you have, does he have?
How many current employees do you have?
I have 10.
10 current employees.
Couple of them actually part-time, but 10 in all.
10 in all, but some part-time.
Okay.
The rest of the plan set is construction details, erosion control. We did show a lighting plan as well, some downcast dark sky lights. They were shown on the building there and was done by a lighting company for that. So pretty straightforward application. I'd really kind of, I think you probably might have questions for us and the applicant and kind of open it up for that and go from there. So thank you.
It's basically the same process you use in the other building?
Yep.
The other building, we had you do waterproof membrane like for the floor and hot way up the wall, like six inches up the wall to keep anything from seeping out of the building?
On the new building?
No, we did that on the, you did that on the existing building when you converted, right?
Yeah, you get it all properly sealed.
Yep. I'm assuming you're going to do the same thing on the new building?
So you can seal that four-foot-high concrete wall, it goes the whole way around, I assume? That's what your plan?
Yeah, the concrete wall actually goes, you know, it actually creates a barrier in here. So yeah, if they're going to seal, water seal, it'd probably just be a membrane on the bottom that all the way around, kind of like we do oil tanks and stuff like that. I haven't seen what he has in existing one, but I'll get a note on the plan accordingly.
The garage doors, if we do some kind of a curb that they have to back over to keep anything coming out the doors?
Does everything that comes into the building recycle? Or are they in some fashion or another?
Yes.
Does?
Yeah.
And the same thing for the man doors, the two egress doors, maybe keep them up off the floor a little bit to curb them.
I will say going in here, these are up higher, so this goes down, so that should be okay there, right?
It's the one where they dump all the
Yep, the man doors you got here and here and then these ones here.
Yeah.
Yep, so six of them, I got it.
Does everybody think about the waiver request for the parking? He's got 10 spaces and 10 employees. Room to park on the gravel, I assume. We should get the waiver requests
Yeah, we should get that taken out first.
Since I messed up.
Note 17 shows what is required and you're asking for a waiver from that.
Pardon me?
I just fell over note 17, which tells the number of spaces that would be required and they're asking for a waiver from that. I see it on page 2 of 5.
Yep, number 17, we showed requirement of 12, we showed 10 paved with the requirement that we can, like I said, pretty much park anywhere in this site, we need to currently.
So the only dumpster storage is those six?
And the other, and I know that was one of the contentions previous, that is the also goals, this will allow some inside storage of those containers as well.
Well, that helps because it gets them under a roof out of the weather.
Yep. And I know you brought that up the conceptual hearing when you came here, yep.
But you can park over in that grass area to the north side of the building and
Excuse me?
You could park up on the north side of the building. There's lots, there's lots of places to park on this thing to get to.
I've been out here many times and parked everywhere to take pictures, so yeah. It's flat.
It's not like it's a tight site.
No, except for the, you can park in the, with permission, you usually park in the power easement too.
Yes, oh absolutely. There's no permit in structure.
So are these the proposed plantings?
Yes. Actually put a landscape plan together to throw some stuff along the street I thought would look nice.
I like that idea.
We did a long, long B&amp;B lane, kind of clean it up there.
So you're paving in front of the, around the building or is it going to be gravel?
There is currently existing pavement. The edge of
Yeah, just out there, the new building.
No, we're not putting, no, just gravel. Yep, leaving it all gravel around it. That's where the drainage kind of worked out as well too, because it's, right now it's gravel and leaving it gravel.
And the the slope areas, you've got it sloping down to compensate, help get you that elevation change, right?
Correct, the six feet that changes inside the building. So the building elevation floor is 394.75 and the low end where the trucks would be is 388.75, so six feet there. So then they got to come back up and around the building and climb.
So
And these are one-foot contours, so you understand, so I know it looks like there's a little bit there. Usually we do two footers.
Because the slope is kind of could you do some maybe grassy areas around that, on the ends to help?
So we did, we put in a grass area here, we put in a grass area here around both sides is what we did, yes. Made up the grade cleaner for us, so.
I see the lines, I just wasn't sure.
It would have, yeah, I need to say loam and seed, I'll add that. But that's where those areas are, they're in the drainage report, is that?
It does say it at the top of the page.
Site plans? Yeah, I'll make sure it's on there though.
Yeah, there's a note there that says loam and seed, all disturbed areas.
Yeah, that's up against the building though, sir.
Yeah. I'll call it out cleanly.
And I guess there's no doors on the backside, right?
The
Up against the lot line?
No.
No. So maybe you can do something in there too, between the lot line and the building?
I pulled the gravel to this point right here and then the gravel's here. So this is all, as you said before, in the loam and seed, so I'll show it, that was the intent of it there, yes.
Because where the scale is and with that stone berm level spreader, you're not going to, no one's not going to likely drive back there anyway.
Right, there was not meant to be, yes, I agree, yep. And like I said, I showed a line for the gravel here coming off the building to show that that would be and then that loam and seeds over there. I just need to be more clear on where.
No help. A bit with the filtration.
Did we have the board have any questions, comments? Sir? Concerns about the waiver for the parking?
No, actually, I'll make a motion on that, I'm okay with that waiver.
Thank you.
Make the motion, we accept the waiver for the parking for the 10 spaces instead of the 12 that's required by our subdivision regulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Just to clarify, the reason for that is because there is other places to park that aren't paved. Is therefore not marked, but there is, there is places to park on the site. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? So the waiver passes?
So is the power going to come from the other building?
We showed an underground electric actually coming from the pole over here and running down to the building.
So when the trucks leave, they're going to go around the north side of the building and exit along the north side of the existing building?
Yep.
So when they leave, they don't get weighed?
Nope, they would have to go around if they have to weigh to this and then come back around. So they cycle through twice. So what I am understanding, and this might be better tomorrow, but they come in, get weighed first. Stuff gets put on it, they'll come around the site, get weighed a second time and then they'll leave this way. So everything continues the circulation one way around the building. Does every truck get weighed?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
That keeps them all going the same direction across the scale.
Yep.
Otherwise, you get a truck at each side of the scale on the horn because the other guy won't move.
Oh, you typically can go both directions on a scale? That could be a problem.
Sure it's happened.
Yeah.
How much room is there between the truck scale and the leach field?
Quite a bit. You mean the bio retention area there?
No, the leach field, right by the building.
Existing EDS beds there?
Looks like like 30 feet.
28 feet or so, yeah. And I mean, that's to the where it says grass, that dotted line there, so I'm assuming they're in there somewhere. It's about 30.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any questions, comments? See none, I will close our public comment. So what's the board think?
You got a drainage report there, I saw?
Yeah, I saw. I looked at the conclusions in the front, I didn't look at the whole thing, but it says it goes down just like you said.
We had submitted a full, had everything there, hydrocath with and that, yep.
Not like having this $11,000 check up here, I lose things up here. So so far the only thing we see is some loam and seeding.
The ceiling, the concrete, curbs around the door and then loam and seed at those areas.
So are the buried propane tanks, is there some?
Those are existing.
Those are existing. Is, if the trucks are going to go out that way, is there something above those or does there have to be something above those?
Because they're existing, I didn't show something, but typically we would put bollards or something like that around that?
Probably going to just stick three bollards around there, wouldn't it?
Yeah, for the trucks that are going to be backing into the building.
Yeah.
The track trailers are loading, they're going to be pushed, because where the scale is, is going to push them away, there's not, it's the other trucks that are backing on the front of it.
The loaded trucks are going to be coming in and going right by it.
Right.
What's the gutter line?
So when we were doing the drainage study for this, if you've been out there, it's, it's a lot of just kind of gravel that goes up and down. So we wanted to kind of create, what we saw out there, the end of spring was a lot of like holes and pockets of water. So I wanted to kind of explain that I would like it to get directed to one area. So this was, you know, this was to explain to them that this is where we envision the water coming to get to this point here. So when they're out there grading it, at least the contractor understands what we were thinking and do it. So really just trying to give detail to contractors during construction.
So you know what you might want to do then? I'm looking at this finished 392 contour that is near the shed.
Yep.
It almost looks like that's going to create a pocket right above the shed.
You mean right here with the 191 contour?
Yeah, because of how it's coming back.
Nice, yeah, that's a miss, that, that contour should have another contour here and then there's a little hole right there, so we need to wash that out. I need to put a spot shot right here to be 191, 291, 391.
Looks like you're going to have six inches of water sitting in there instead of going around the end of it, down into your
I need to add a spot shot there.
Yeah.
Good catch.
So what's the slope of the driveway going to be in a
5% on that side.
At least let me say east side of the building before you
Only slope I got, whatever slope you got there, you know?
What is 5%?
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I like the idea, took the initiative for some landscaping out front.
I do too, I like that.
I was worried I was setting a president's on the road though.
Some of the other buildings up there could use it.
It's part of life right now. I've got five kids that are growing up in the state, like you want it to look good, you know? Do right.
So we needs to add three bollards around the propane tanks, a spot shot to the north up in the easement basically. Loam and seed, seal the concrete floor and the walls up.
Yep, that's what I had.
And curb stops at the man doors and at the, the two man doors and the four, four truck doors. Where we have six truck doors.
The two of them, two of them are going down in, so we're going to do the four truck doors and the two man doors.
And the other, in that regard, you might want to put a note on there that that floor is to be level, not graded?
First thing they want to do is pitch it. You always want to pitch it for it.
Yeah.
Comments, suggestions? Motion?
I mean, what we're asking to do here I think can be is a conditional approval and we're not asking for anything.
No, I don't think we need a site walk, I've been there a couple of times.
So have I.
So then property to the north, the property to the south, this property, the one across the road.
Do you need, since this is kind of a your business is a regulated business, you need a solid waste permit, right, from the state?
Yep, sure do.
Do you need any kind of revised approval from them for this?
No, no.
Okay. Just don't even ask. How is that, is that permit, that's, they give you a permit for so many tons a day, right, is that how it works?
Yes, it's only, it's only tons a day.
Do you have a note on the plan saying how many tons a day the permit's going for?
300 tons a day, 1,800 tons a week.
Yeah, but I
I will, I do not have them, I didn't know what it was, but I put the note on the plan.
Just for reference, so.
Yep. What was that again?
It's 300 tons a day, 1,800 tons a week.
Perfect.
Baseline. And you got a permit, you got a, you got a permit number, right, a solid waste number?
Oh yeah, yeah, the EDS number, yeah.
I just said put note, put a reference note on the plan, so yeah, yep, permit note. You give me a copy of that?
Yeah.
Is the lighting, um, is that just while we're in operation, or is that on all the thing?
The wiring?
The lighting.
Yeah, yeah. The outside lightens on pretty much, it gets dark until it comes on.
Does it stay until morning?
Yep.
It's not like you've got a lot of butters there anyway, but.
Except in the industrial park, I don't. See a problem?
Doesn't bother me.
Can you copy your note about protecting the existing well onto the grading plan also?
Yep. It should be just thawing it in that window.
It'll fit.
What about the other well that's out there?
Doesn't matter, does it?
Oh, is that, is that? Yeah, is that above grade, or is it all buried?
Well, this is the, the gravel area kind of ended there and then came around ours, so I didn't put something around that one up in there. Is that, that one's not used anymore, is it? You have two wells out there, one's more northern.
One's like a dug well, with the old concrete walls there.
And you're not using that for anything?
That's not being used.
That's the one further, closest to Haynes?
Yeah.
Is that the well?
That's, that's the new well.
This is the new one, that's the old one.
The new monitor?
Yeah.
Who, who sees that? It gets sent here. Hold on.
Yeah.
So that well is not in use, this is the new well.
So we had some kind of agreement, you were monitoring that well?
Yeah, I do it every year, we get the water all tested, the gap of well.
You had that note to listen to?
Yep.
You knew that was coming.
Yep. Year of the reports to the town?
Yeah.
Yes.
You want to say what?
No.
Do we need a dentist?
So. I make a motion, we accept this with the proposed changes.
Conditions.
Conditions, that's it.
Should I read all seven of them?
Yep.
Okay. One, adding spot shots to the north in the, in the easement for the grading. Six copying about protecting the well over by the, onto the grading plan. Lowman seed those areas beside the building on, on three sides. Seal the concrete floor. Curb stops at the four truck doors and the two man doors. Do we need them on the other two?
No.
Show bollards for buried propane, propane tank, so do you want to show those, or just note that they'll be there?
I want to show, I want to show them, yes, show the three, three bollards around the propane tank. And monitor the well in the.
The northerly well.
Northerly well in the power area, continue that.
I also had a couple more.
Add, add a note about DES, the solid waste number, and three hundred tons per day and eighteen hundred tons a week. And the floor of the proposed building shall be level. Are we sure we don't want curb stops in the other? That's the seven I got. Do you accept that? Okay. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Are we sure we don't want curb stops in the other two doors?
Those two doors are here, coming down to the flat that the truck's sitting in. So nothing's going to get, yeah, so nothing can get out those doors, they're up higher.
Well, how's the truck get out?
It goes up, ramps up and runs. So what I was saying on the architecture that you were looking at here, so when you come into the building here, the truck goes the first, so this is a hundred feet long. The first twenty-five feet, it drops four feet. Then it's a fifty-foot level, and then it's four feet back up on these, it comes out.
He's in a trench.
So the architectural pitcher did not show it that way.
The architectural pitcher showed the doors down there.
The architectural pitcher showed it that.
Your grading doesn't show it that way.
Yes, it does.
If your finished floor is.
So right here.
Three ninety-four seventy-five.
Finished floor is three nine, it's three eighty-eight down here, seventy-five.
Right.
Yep. We're at three eighty-nine here, and we're coming out at three eighty-nine five. So it's about, not four feet, I guess, it's two and a half to three feet to get it down.
Yeah, okay, the nine looks like an eight. Okay, we only need four, I agree.
It's in the bathtub there, anyway.
Right.
How about seal on the floor, no, I think you seal the floor.
Oh, yeah, guys seal the floor.
So all the floors be sealed.
That makes sense.
Any other discussions, comments, concerns, thoughts? Can't think of any other words. So you have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'll be right, she's going to say hi. Supposed to be a little bit different.
Just to make sure it stays in there.
Pass that down to Craig, please.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is zoning amendments, which I assume is why we have this large audience.
Pass that back to Craig, please, thank you.
Ooh, I got my book back.
Thank you.
So the first one to talk about is the building thing, right? Yeah, started before. I talked to Romeo briefly this morning, no, this afternoon, and he said he liked it as it was, as we have it worded right now.
As we have it worded right now, it kind of maintains itself by keeping up with the currently adopted state code, as that's, as that's newly adopted.
He did bring up a good point. If the, if the governor signs something into law, it becomes an RSA, why in the world do we have to have it in our building code? Other than that. Does anybody in the public have to speak to Article Four, revise in the building code?
You might want to, um, explain that word grammatically.
Yeah, all we're, all we're doing is, the Article Four, I should have said that earlier. Our current zoning references, uh, basically the nineteen ninety-three and the two thousand and fifteen building codes. And all we're doing is revising it to say that, instead of saying BOKO, the National Building Code, twelfth edition nineteen ninety-three. We're changing it to the International Building Code, two thousand and eighteen, as may be amended. So hopefully we don't have to do this next time the governor passes a two thousand and twenty-one International Building Code. That's basically what we're doing, is just changing the reference in the building code.
Must be much more stringent, are they?
I don't have any idea. Not all of it. Some of it, they, they relaxed a couple things in a couple places because they realized they were getting a little carried away.
I have just, uh, something to point out in the text. I may not be reading it correctly, but it says we're being marked and designated as International Building Code, et cetera. And then in the following statement, it says, each and all of the regulations, provisions, et cetera, is in terms of said BOKO National Building Code are hereby referred to. So is that, we're referring to that to replace it with International Building Code? Or should that be consistent as saying International Building Code in that location as well?
Yes, it should say International Building Code, two thousand and eighteen there as well. That's a typo.
Yes.
Yep, yep, yep.
We can fix typos.
And just for clarity, all we can fix tonight on any of these is typos, grammatical errors.
Yeah, we can't, we can't change the substance of an article tonight.
Yeah, understood, I just wanted to make sure I, I was reading it correctly and not misunderstanding.
So we need a motion by the board to recommend this, I believe?
And, um, we got something here from Town Council about how the amendments are going to read.
How the ballot's going to read.
How the ballot has to, how the amendment's going to read on the ballot, correct. So I don't know how we want to exactly word that, that we, the planning board recommends Article Four.
We need a motion. We decided we need to recommend it.
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article Four for the ballot to the selectmen as Amendment Number One.
Second. Discussion.
Is, is this, this is something that has to be done, I assume, it's not just a voluntary, let's do it.
We're supposed to be up with the state building code.
Right.
That's the state law. Yeah. That's what Craig was saying, I don't know why we have to have it in there at all, because of state law, why do we have to?
State, state law, why do we have to have it in our building codes? I don't understand that either, but.
Craig, um, the article will be written as legal review, per the legal review, not what's written on that paper.
Pardon me?
So she changed the wording after legal review. If you can see what's posted, what she did in the legal review is a little bit different.
No, don't shoot your thing.
So on this here, after you guys.
On this.
Posted it, right?
Yes.
You did legal review, which is this.
Yes.
The legal review says in that Article Four, to reference the international instead. See what we wrote on the posting?
Yeah.
It's worded just a little bit differently, but that was per legal.
Yep.
It gave you the reference of the new code versus the old code. A little bit more clarity.
Okay. Did somebody second?
They did.
They did, okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, the next one is Amendment Two. I will start with the town, with the town council's main consent. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Two to the wear zoning as follows? amend Article Three regarding non-conforming lots to allow any residence to be constructed on a dimensionally non-conforming lot if certain conditions are met. And to limit additions to non-conforming structures to those structures which are located in the front setback. So on the other hand out. You'll see, we're talking about amending three point five is really all we're doing, we're not touching three point five, oh, we are touching three point five four, sorry. So right now, it says notwithstanding the minimum lot area requirements set forth in Table one-one of this ordinance. A single-family residence may be constructed on a lot which does not comply with the said requirements in Table one-one. Instead of that, it's going to say, a residence may be constructed on a lot which does not comply with the dimensional requirements found in this ordinance. Basically, right now, three point five only deals with minimum lot areas. By saying it this way, then it also deals with frontage. Now, that's really the only other one I think, I can think of right offhand.
Dimensional requirements as well as area requirements.
Yeah, the only other dimensional requirement is really frontage.
It's frontage, right.
Which is why we changed three point five, well, why we have on here, three point five point four. We added the word front, and existing structure currently located within the, we're adding front. Setback will be allowed to add in addition to the structure provided, the new addition will not be more non-conforming. That's the two changes in Article, in Amendment Two.
If you look at. The residential, of the rural ag. Explanation. Doesn't it really cover that?
No.
It doesn't, huh?
No, because this is only for, um.
Non-conforming, yeah.
Village districts. No, this is for everything.
I'm sorry.
Was it originally for village districts?
It, it, it would.
It came up in a.
It came up in the village district problem. I mean, the other, the other zones, the, all the other districts, this, we're, we're all set with that anyway, the way it was worded.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought.
But because the village districts had other specifications within the district.
You're telling me the village district is consistent with everything else?
Right. So, so the same thing applies across the board, village districts aren't treated differently when it comes to non-conforming uses.
So nothing changes?
Not really. Not really.
That's what I thought.
But it's just a clarity issue that came up.
Any other comments?
This also, it sounds like, it sounds a mirror, though. Issue with the, uh, the additional housing units, allowing that to occur. Sounds to mirror the additional, whatever that was, the additional housing.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with that, though.
No. Just didn't seem that this kind of made that.
Someone, yeah.
Easier to, to do. Or if it was just another.
Yeah, this is a totally different issue.
I'm saying if, if, if that would be applicable to it as well. But we can't change anything anyways, this is just grammatical.
Right.
Don't have to vote on it. We can vote now.
I'm not voting, so it doesn't matter.
We still can.
Well, you can't change anything, you must have an option to scrap it, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's, that's our options, accept it, make minor grammatical changes, or scrap it.
Three choices, take it as it is, fix some changes, or else forget the whole thing.
So I, I guess my question would be, it, it seems that to be constructed on a dimensionally non-conforming lot if certain conditions are met. What are the conditions, or is that specified when they apply for?
Three point five point one.
Yeah.
The side setback, this rear setback, et cetera, are smaller.
Three point five point one and, and three point five point four, this one.
Yeah, chum it through.
Yep, that's the conditions, right.
That'll have the setback memorized, but.
Yeah, three point five point one spells it out.
And the, the problem that arose really wasn't, it's happened a couple times, really, really wasn't a setback problem either. It was a lot that didn't have frontage required in the current zoning. So that's really what this thing is intended to address is lots that don't have the frontage in current zoning that still get, don't need a variance to build on.
But it's still, three five two says it shall have at least fifty feet.
Right, right. That still applies.
Okay.
Anybody from public? On the non-conforming lot article, amendment number three? No, amendment number two, I'm sorry. Close the public area. Public comment, excuse me.
I'll make a motion. We recommend amendment number two to be put on the ballot.
Second.
Discussion?
Should we amend that to say, you know, consistent with legal review? Or do we not have to say that?
No, we don't.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And last but not least, amendment number three, are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number three to ware zoning orders as follows? To add a new Article thirty-eight entitled Residential Camping Ordinance to define camping. Prohibit commercial camping outside of authorized campgrounds. Prohibit tents, travel trailers, motorhomes, and RVs from being located in the front setback. Does everybody have a copy? 'Cause I assume that's why everybody is here. Nobody's speaking, okay. So basically what this is doing is allowing camping.
How do you define camping?
Thirty-eight point two. Camping is defined as the use of tents, travel trailers, motorhomes, recreational vehicles, or similar structures for human habitation for this article. She will save a paper. Thirty-eight point three says no commercial camping is allowed except in unauthorized campground. If a property owner rents out the primary residence on the lot, then any camping will constitute a commercial arrangement for the purpose of this article. Thirty-eight point four says tents, travel trailers, motorhomes, recreational vehicles, or similar structures shall not be located in the setback. That's the extent of Article thirty-eight. Nothing I've read at all.
And legal review actually changes that to say located in the front setback.
You want to change it? Can we change your mind?
There's a question, but it has a question mark with it, so.
Well, that's 'cause the whole thing's a question.
Yeah, it's a sentence that's gonna be on the ballot, so it does have a question mark.
Okay. Of itself, with the front setback is a question.
And I, I think thirty-eight point four as written could be a little problematic. Because you can, you can drive down the road, somebody has their RV parked in the driveway in the front of the house. They're not necessarily using it as an RV, but by this, it would say that travel trailer motorhome can't be parked in their driveway if it's in the front setback. And I could probably drive down River Road right now and there's probably ten of them that would be parked within the setback.
Yeah, and as it written, as it's written now, it says it can't be located in any setback.
Right.
So this.
So I think that one's problematic.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Hmm.
Anything else? 'Cause I wonder what we can do about that. Let's open up public comment. Who wants to come up first? Since you're all here.
I'll come up.
Yes, sir.
Kyle Parker. You're titling it residential camping ordinance, but it's not really addressing anything residential.
So we can strike the word residential.
I mean, it says residential, but then it says no commercial camping, so all that's, all the article is really intended to do is to say that you can only camp in a, in a, like a licensed or, like Cold Springs or Autumn Hills.
Right.
Well, it can only be, you can only camp for commercial purposes, for getting money. I mean, you can't.
Yeah, so property owner can't rent part of their property so someone can camp on it and get money for it. That's commercial camping. If someone wanted to pitch a tent in the backyard and not charge money for it, I'm assuming that's.
Why do we need an ordinance for that then?
I don't know.
Why do we need to have an ordinance to say, hey, you don't.
We have one right here.
My brother's coming up for the weekend, then he's gonna set a tent up.
Well, we don't. We have one that says you can't rent your property to do that. It doesn't say you can't do that at all.
No, I know. It's just, it's just confusing that it's called the residential camping ordinance and it doesn't really, this, what's written here doesn't address anything residential.
Yeah, I'm gonna assume that there was an issue that this got generated by.
Yes, like we mentioned a couple weeks ago, there was many.
Yeah, many of them, not a, yeah.
Yeah, there were many. There wasn't, I don't know how many, but there was several, at least more than several. People sleeping in RVs and travel trailers.
Right, but how is, this, this, this doesn't seem like that's gonna alleviate that problem with the way this is done.
Just not charge them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question, though. Anybody else?
Uh, Nick Foxey Shore. I kinda had those same questions. Um, when you say many, I mean, I, I haven't heard anybody having issues. Nothing's been called to the police. You know, we, it seems like when issues are being brought up, even on the selectman's side, it's like, a lot of stuff happened, a lot of things happened, but when we ask for facts and actual details, we don't have a.
We're here to look at this article only.
Correct. I'm talking about how many.
We're not talking about anything else that comes up to the selectmen.
I'm talking about how many camping issues have been recorded.
I don't know. I know the code enforcement officer told me many. I didn't ask him for a list.
But you're basing an ordinance for the entire town.
On many people, yes.
On many, but you don't know what that is?
No.
And what were the issues?
Sewage, people living there year-round.
So year-round is bad?
In a camping trailer, yes.
Why?
Without sewage, yes.
Why?
Where's your sewer going out of the camper?
Where does the sewer go when you camp in a national park?
Hopefully it goes inside the sewer and you haul it away and you dump it.
In a national park? You're gonna camp, you're gonna pack out your sewage? No, it's right on the, no, it's right on the national parks. That's not what they do.
But it's not on my, if you're camping on my lot, I don't have any place to put it.
Can I ask a question? So this ordinance already exists and.
No.
No, Article thirty-eight doesn't exist at all?
No.
Okay, thanks. That clarifies things for me.
So if this has been a year-round issue and there's been many things happening, why wasn't this brought up earlier?
Don't know. Because it's the time of year to bring up zoning ordinance changes. We have to do them in November, December, and January.
But there's been complaints, you're saying, from residents and from the police and from the fire department regarding these issues?
There's been complaints given to code enforcement, at least. I don't know about the police fire. I don't know about.
Okay. And, um, what do you think this Article thirty-eight, if enacted or passed, would actually do to change what was brought up earlier? That people are already camping and using their RV, because you can't say that someone can't use their RV or rent it out.
We're saying you can't rent out your house and live in your RV.
And what's the law that says you can't do that?
I don't think there is one. I don't know if there is one. I just, I don't know that. That's what the zoning ordinance changes.
I do remember in the past, and this is some years ago, mention from code enforcement at the time that there were some serious health issues with not having sewage, not having water on site, living in RV year-round. I'm going to assume this is an expansion on that topic. And again, this was a number of years ago, so, you know, I've been out of the loop for six years or so.
And this.
But that was an issue back then.
Uh, one issue was that somebody's camper was dumping the sewage right in, they dug a hole in the ground and the sewage is going in the hole in the ground. Not into a leach field. That was the one I remember. Another one was being dumped out in the ground.
And there are many previous code enforcement officers have, have had issues with this.
It's not just this one. It's the last three.
Yes, I, I was around for the last bunch of years, yeah.
Yes. I know when you were here.
So were these tents and people that were dumping on the ground, did you get confirmation that they're actually renting?
No, doesn't matter.
Okay, well, the whole point to this is you're saying that they can't rent.
Correct. Then it's commercial.
But it's not commercial. It's someone living there. That's a totally different issue. They're not renting, they're just living there. This is not a rental issue. This is not anything to do with that. It's someone living in a tent.
If the, if the property owner rents out the house and lives in the tent, that makes.
But those aren't the issues that have been brought up. None of those issues that were brought up were saying those folks have rented. Do you have any documentation proving that those people rented?
I don't have any documentation with.
So why is this Article thirty-eight?
The code enforcement officer asked me to present it. Because he was having many complaints.
But the complaints weren't tied to people renting?
They were tied to camping, yes.
Renting?
Camping.
Renting and camping?
Camping.
This is specifically talking about renting? And you're saying camping, those are two different issues. Am I the only one seeing this? I, I guess the question is again, why? Why are you, if it's a health and safety issue, then people's living in their tent and they have kids in there, then yeah, you should bring CPS and bring the state and say, this is not safe for them. But that's not what this issue is referring to. This is, issue is referring to someone renting and so far, the code enforcement and no one I've heard and no issues that have been brought up is regarding renting.
Go on.
I, I don't understand why the town continues to
The setback with the driveway.
tell people what we can and can't do on our property as long as it's legit and as long as it's safe.
Really, you can't.
What? The complaint is not renting. The complaint is sewage being dropped on the ground.
That's most of it, yes, part of it.
There's many camps in town right now that still have an outhouse that they use. That's a hole in the ground. What's the difference?
It's not allowed.
I'm sorry, what?
By the current regulations, that's not allowed.
So you're gonna go house to house and where and shut down people that have?
No, I'm not doing that at all. This is the planning board. We are not in charge of enforcement. I've told you that several times now.
Okay, no more questions.
Anybody else like to speak?
Dave Pratt with the road. As far as the setback, I know that got changed to front setback and there's some questions about driveways and whatnot. And understandably so.
I don't think it got changed to front setback.
Okay.
The town attorney wrote this up. That's gonna be on the ballot. I'm gonna say the front, the word front should not be there. We'll just say located in the setback.
I understand driveways. Is that gonna be added on as being able to park an RV or camping? Because I'm just thinking setbacks as far as, people park on the driveways all the time. Whether it's an RV or they are not, it's not a, not an issue, but outside of that, anything else around, especially in the residential area, where you have such close, you're a little closer to your neighbors and having people right on your property line. It's probably really not what you want.
Well, the front setback says fifty and the side setback's twenty-five. So as long as you're more than fifty feet from the right of way, you can park in your driveway. As long as you're twenty-five feet from the.
Sideline.
Sideline, you can park it.
That's all I have to call it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig.
Yes.
I mean, there's a lot of driveways that are shorter than fifty feet though.
Yes, there is.
So I guess you, and that's in the setback, whether you use front or don't use front, it's still a setback, setback. Seems like it's a problem, but.
Well, there's a lot of people that park RVs places other than, in their driveway, especially the active part of the driveway. Because they can be fairly large. You know, but I know several people that have built a little pad somewhere.
When you're driveway, zip, you park over here.
Right.
And you're within, I'm sure you're within fifty feet of the.
Yeah, I think that, like you said, you can drive down River Road right now and there's bunches of RVs parked out front within fifty feet of the road. And by this, I would say, yeah, they're, they're obviously not living in them. They're just stored there, but by the way this is written, that would be illegal.
And we can't change this. We're just doing grammatic.
Right.
Right, so.
We can say yes or no to it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I I think that needs to be reworded.
Yeah, I do too, but I don't know, we can't do it tonight.
But we don't have to recommend this either.
No, we can withdraw it. And we're the one presenting it.
Yeah. I would make a motion that that one gets withdrawn.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
How did this sentence get that, was that in the original thing Tony gave us?
Yes.
Was it?
I believe. I shouldn't say yes. I should say I believe, because I don't. If it has a little unless due to lots, I'd probably cut me a bit of that. Would've been nicer to leave the whole sentence in there.
Yeah, not really. Because I'm not gonna leave, I'm not gonna leave a variance up to the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, let's trip through. That's, that's why we changed it.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to remove amendment three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Restained? Motion passes. Amendment three's not gonna be there.
I think it's a good idea that, you know, this shows up next year, but I think that's gotta be reworded. It's gonna piss a lot of people off.
Well, you eliminated the word front. I mean, that's a major change, because.
Well, no, the front, the front was not on the, what was published hadn't had, didn't have the word front in it.
Somehow town council inserted the word front.
Somehow town council, it doesn't matter. It's gone now anyway.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Oh, it could be. I'm gonna step down for amendment four. Amendment four. I'll, um, now I'll appoint Paul.
Now I'll appoint Paul Gangin to replace Mr. Francisco while he's off the board. Amendment Four, with the undersigned residence petition to amend townwide zoning ordinance map by modifying the zoning of tax map, one oh seven lots forty-four and forty-six. Said parcel is being located at sixty and sixty-eight Wood Fern Road to change from RA, Rural Ag, to residential, by petition. Forty-four and forty-six Wood Fern. Issue, Wood Fern is all... Most of Wood Fern is already residential. So assuming that's a last little lot down at the end of Wood Fern? Correct, Mr. Francisco, do you know?
Would you like me to comment, as I'm a member of the public?
Yeah, could you?
Yes, this is concerning the last two lots on the left, as you drive back Wood Fern.
Yeah.
Next to last lot is residential, and the last lot is rural ag.
How big are those lots?
I don't know, I haven't surveyed them yet.
Well, a quarter of an acre?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, pretty small.
The surrounding lots are all residential already, so if it's not... Right, so it's not like it's a little spot that's always gonna be orphaned?
And the reason for the petition is the next last house wants to buy a little bit of land from the rural agricultural zone property, so they can build a garage. But the rural agriculturally zoned lot is already under five acres. So I don't, I told her I don't know how you can get a variance to, because my lot's too big. What's your hardship, my lot's too big? So if we would change the zone of that lot to residential, then she wouldn't need a variance to buy a little bit of the land to put a garage on her lot. So that's the reason for it, to allow a lot line adjustment and for her to build a garage. That's basically the reason for the petition.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Where's Craig live?
Uh, he's out by the... He's up here. Mr. Brothers' block.
Well, that's where his house was.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we present this one to the, or put it on the ballot. If everything around it's already residential.
We support this, I think we have to make a motion to support the the planning board supports or recommends...
It was on the ballot anyway.
The planning board recommends the petition article.
Okay, I make a motion, we recommend, to whatever you said.
Yeah, the petition article.
Petition article.
Second.
Go on favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? All we have is the grant. Which Miami, which I put some cases here. So they contacted you, or you contacted them initially?
Probably they contacted us, asking if we needed any help at that time. I said no, but I thought we were doing it ourselves. And then as time went on, we didn't press forward. We didn't press forward, so they reached out again, there was a couple other communities that didn't want to go in. So they asked if we'd like some help. So I said sure. I said sure. So one of the girls put together in the office, what I said, all of you, as far as the grants application, and Steve Martin.
Well, actually, if I remember right, two people put together, and then one person changed the yellow stuff.
Yeah, there was another change this morning, I think I shared that with you.
I might've missed that one.
The four master plans that we've had.
I had a question after reading it, I mean, in the past, the community input part was done by mailings and things like that, that we're hoping and praying people would return. Which, the return rate wasn't that great.
Yeah, that's not actually what they're planning to do here.
No, I was hoping not, I was hoping it'd be like more of an online thing.
Yeah, they're talking about doing social media and a lot of social media focus, and, yeah.
Resident participation that way than...
I think you'd need to do all of them, right?
Well, I don't think we need to do the mailing, those get expensive.
So here...
And they don't work, people don't send back.
It's addressed in here, actually, as community engagement to be performed by the update committee with assistance of the staff, so project information on the town's site and the consultant's websites, and establish links to Facebook or other social media sites, and document public comments and received, and any blogging received, so, and also coordinate a community input session to make use of where in the world. And there may, there's something about a survey here, let me see if I can find that, I don't know how that's going to be done. I don't know if that's physical or online as well. I would assume that it would be online.
Well, that's up to us and the chosen app consultant.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all up to them.
Right.
Its possibilities are certainly...
But they're definitely focusing more on social media than mailings.
Yeah, that's for sure.
But how many people, I mean, what about the people who don't use social media?
They don't do mailings either.
I mean, I don't, I avoid, I don't do a damn thing with social media.
I mean, I'm sure...
My extent of social media is the fishing guide in Canada.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have a Facebook page, I don't tweet or Twitter or twack, or anything, so...
Yeah, I mean, you can do a mailing.
I mean, or, well, you have the where in the world, right? You have a cable channel.
I think the problem with the mailings is they're, it's not just the cost of the mailing, it's, you know, dealing with all the returns, tabulating everything, getting it all together.
No, I understand.
Because an EDDM can be, and every door direct mailing can be very, very cheap. The postal service will help you organize that, help you with addresses. But yes, the physical part of actually getting them, putting them in the mail, getting the returns, that's the manpower-heavy part of the thing. But would the consultant do that?
Well, we'd need to ask that question again, right?
I mean, we'll get to that, I mean, for...
Yeah, for the grant, we don't need to worry about how we're gonna contact them.
Exactly. I think, are we talking about, are we gonna do this, say yes, we would like to do this?
Absolutely. I'm not sure twenty-five grand's gonna redo eight chapters either, but that's okay.
Yeah, but they put, they put the money all in here.
Yeah, I see. I read the whole thing.
Yeah.
The only thing I saw I didn't like is it says "and" twice on one spot.
But because of the function of the grant, there's only certain chapters we can address, or some chapters we can't touch.
Anyway, yeah.
Has to do with housing.
Right.
Well, what I gathered from reading what I did read was that, there was something in there about if you do nothing else, you've got to address affordable housing. So that was where the main thrust was.
Yes, that's, that's what the purpose of the grant is.
That's the purpose of the grant, so you gotta stress that in here to get the grant. And what happens with, what we do with the grant money is pretty much up to us and our consultant.
Oh, you think so? I am...
We're updating our master, we aren't creating any zoning ordinances. We aren't creating any subdivision regulations, that's not part of this at all.
No, no, this is solely to update.
Update the master plan, that's it.
Yeah. And have some, and have a consultant who is something of an expert in the subject matter, and who can tabulate data, to actually write the language as well.
But if I'm not mistaken, I believe that grant system is a multi-phase grant anyway. And this is like the first phase, if we do this right, then we can use it.
There were two other phases.
And then we can go into, yes, subdivision regulate, subdivision and zoning, yes.
Right.
This is, this is phase one.
Well, do you get any, we're looking for points, is what I understood, right? Do you get anything for your existing, whatever you have existing, that addresses?
Housing stock? Yeah, oh yeah, what you have existing helps towards what you're, because what they're gonna do is we need X amount of affordable housing units in there. So they'll count what we have as existing. And then how we get to that number in the end is what we're gonna have to come up with with phase two and three.
Well, I was looking through the the regs today, it seemed to me that we really have a lot if you, if you kinda consolidate it. But one, I have one other question, are we, what's the difference between affordable housing and workforce housing? I hear these terms, but...
They're pretty much the same.
One and the same.
Not quite, but almost.
Almost, yeah.
Yeah, and, and when you talk about workforce housing, I always like to keep in mind that we're talking about, you know, firefighters that earn fifty K a year, you can't afford to live almost anywhere on that.
Essentially, that's what it is.
Police officers, you know, medical support personnel, that kind of stuff.
Town administrators, et cetera.
And coming uptown administrator, you know.
They can't live anywhere.
Yeah, exactly.
Well...
I wasn't trying to be...
No, no, I just hope that every time we say "unit," we remember that there are actual people behind that term, that's an objective...
And there's other people, and then there's increase in taxes for everybody. Again.
Yeah, well...
The market will dictate housing, if you can't afford to live somewhere, it's not our responsibility to make it affordable for someone.
No, but isn't it part of our...
It's not our responsibility, our responsibility as a planning board is to look for manageable, manageable growth, appropriate growth, but also to consider the interest of the current citizens. So you put up a duplex of ten houses, and each house has two and a half kids who go to the public schools, that's more money than the public budget for the schools, which increases everybody's taxes. That's the issue. Or, if I have a nice piece of property, and I have a house, and all of a sudden, within a block, affordable housing goes up, what does that do to my property value? Most people, their primary investment is their home, their greatest investment. We should protect people's investments, and buy it through planning appropriately, so we don't minimize their value.
On that point, then, some people's most investment is their land, not their home.
Okay.
So by creating five acre zoning, you just devalued their land. By creating two hundred fifty feet of frontage, you just devalued their land. By requiring fifty foot, by requiring a fifty foot buffer, you're just...
Yeah, but land will never hold the value of a home, though. If someone's primary, if someone owns a home and a piece of land, their home's gonna be worth more. Say I own a home in Holly Hill, and I own, you know, ten acres over here. That's vacant.
I got sixty-five acres. You took, you cut the density I could have in there in half, by going to five acre zoning. That's...
My land is undevelopable right now by our zoning. Before the five acre zoning, I could've developed it, but now I can't.
Yeah.
I can, but I can't make any money doing it.
And you devalued mine by... A lot more than the cost of my house. Okay. So that argument's...
Well, no, that's, it all depends on whose bull's getting gored, quite frankly.
And two and a half kids per house is a twenty-year-old number.
What is it now?
Three quarters of a kid.
Three quarters, no. It depends, I have four.
Yeah, you have four, but there's a...
I have zero, so that's...
Yeah, but again, again, my taxes have doubled since I lived here, so...
Well, I mean, even three quarters only covers half of them. You're looking at eighteen thousand dollars.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah, I mean...
So what, what we're looking at right now is a grant to help us update the master plan in the areas that the state is saying at some point we're gonna have to deal with it. Do we want to get behind this, or do we want to get ahead of this, and do we want to start with this grant? That's where we're at right now.
We want to be in front of it.
Well, I...
Let's do the legislation first.
You know, without municipal water and sewage, there's no free ride. You start right off, before you get any house, a hundred thousand. Let me, let me just pass this on, in the residential district, we allow single and two-family dwellings, cluster housing, accessory dwelling units, and multifamily housing, attached or unattached, with a special exception.
You could, you could cluster housing on, on large acres, you could put up a, you know, you don't need five acres if you do a cluster housing.
No, I know.
You do, you do.
I'm saying...
The density is based on five acres.
If you have, if you have ten acres...
So Holly Hill is a hundred and twenty acre parcel, and they have forty-six houses in it?
That was the four of the five acre zoning.
Then what's Duck Pond?
That's the four or five acre zoning.
We haven't had a subdivision with a road on it since we passed the five acre zoning.
In the Rural Ag District, they allow single and two-family homes, accessory dwelling units, and manufactured housing, mobile homes.
Yeah, for duplexes, the land...
No, the fact that we allow them in a mobile homes is, I think, makes them as affordable as you could possibly get. So I got on the phone today, you can buy a new three-bedroom, mobile home for ninety-five thousand dollars, that's just one I looked at.
Oh, yeah.
Or they had a, another used one, sixty-seven thousand, or you could buy, rent, own. So the numbers I used, and I'm probably, I said, well, look, a lot, seventy-five grand, plus or minus probably. A well, a well, ten thousand. Septic system, I used twenty-five.
How much is the well?
Ten grand as a starting...
Oh, he said two.
Oh, no, no. Septic system, twenty-five.
About right.
Yeah, so that's a hundred and ten thousand. And you're gonna get site work, I put down ten thousand. But anyway, you can get out of a, and I talked at the last meeting about the same thing, but nobody seemed to believe me. For a little bit over two hundred thousand, and for as little as a hundred and thirty thousand, you can get into a, in where, into a mobile home.
The problem is, your lot value is about half.
No.
Yeah.
Well, I'll disagree with you, but it doesn't make any difference tonight, does it?
Yeah, no.
Because if, if, if the lot, okay. I didn't look at lots, I did find a mobile home in where, own a lot, for a hundred ninety-nine thousand. So that's today. So what I'm saying is, I think we're very generous at the moment with our, I mean, you can, the problem is, is no contractor is gonna, is not really interested in a lot, in a septic, in a well, and put a mobile home on it, there's nothing in it for them. And the individual buyer doesn't really have the expertise to get into this, I think that's the problem. So one of the things that maybe could be done to make housing more affordable, it's already affordable, is somehow, I don't know how you do it, but you enlighten them as to how you gotta go about this, make a few phone calls. It can be done.
Well, codes are so restricted now, it's hard to build yourself.
That's even worse.
Why don't you go around buying five acre lots, put mobile homes on them, put them for sale for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you'll make all kind of money.
I'll say no.
You go around, buy a couple five acre lots, put a mobile home on it, sell it for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you'll be rich.
No, I don't think you'll be rich. But it could be done. But what I'm saying is, we're not exactly excluding these people, you know? The second thing is, like I said, without town water and town sewage, it's never gonna become a big issue in where. I can't believe it, because...
I designed an assisted living, forty-six beds and an assisted living on a leach field, in a well.
On a well?
Yeah, in a leach field.
And where's the septic system?
Sweetfield.
Well, that can be done, but that's not cheap either, I don't know how affordable is that?
Yeah, it was assisted living, forty-six bed assisted living facility, so...
Well, people I see in assisted living are paying a couple grand a week. So I don't know if you could use, you know, some of the things we've been doing to enhance the, getting the grant money is what I was getting at.
Well, I think just what they, how it's written, I think...
The grant money is just for us to get information from the citizens to help...
Research.
Revises the match plan. Danny Jean had her hand up five times, I was trying to be mean to you, so yes.
No, I understand, I have a question, though, and there may be, and there may be a couple questions kicking around in here once they ask the first one, but I think there are. So last year, the planning board saw fit to ask for twenty thousand dollars from the voters, from the taxpayers, to update the master plan. Was there, was a... Was they, was affordable housing on your radar for that?
No.
Here, we have an opportunity to get the twenty-five thousand dollars, it needs to be focused on that issue, but...
It needs to be focused on housing.
It needs to be focused on housing.
Not affordable housing.
Correct. So it needs to be focused on housing, and do we see any way to get this done without going back to the voters and asking for money if we don't do this, and we know that we would like to update the master plan in certain locations?
Well, I think by doing this first, and then next year, we can go before the voters, say, look, we got it started with grant money.
Yes, that, that's my theory, we got...
Now we need another twenty-five thousand to finish.
We got six chapters done for free, now we wanna do the other, whatever it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
And also, follow on, if this gets done, there's money to write the language for zoning and subdivision regulations down the road so that we don't have to ask them for that as well.
Right.
It's a layered effect.
Naomi, since I saw someplace we had to put a copy of tonight's minutes in the packet to Southern New Hampshire, can you make sure the minutes say something like Danny Jean just mentioned, that last year we tried to get twenty-five thousand, twenty thousand dollars from the voters and got denied? The article didn't pass, can you make sure it says that in the minutes?
For master plan update specifically.
I was gonna mention that later on anyway, but I think it might help the whole thing if it's in there.
You know, I think the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission pretty much footed the bill for the various...
They wrote the master plan?
They're on the two thousand four one? They didn't foot the bill, they did the work.
Well, that's...
We paid them.
Yeah, we didn't pay them big bucks, I don't believe.
Uh, Paul told me it was like thirty or thirty-five.
Was it, yeah.
Well, I make a motion that we authorize Naomi to sign the grant, I think that's what we need to do, right?
Second.
Yes.
And you think there's, there's no strings attached to this?
No, there isn't.
No, I would've interpreted it a little different, but, okay.
Discussion?
Go ask Faust. Go ask Faust. Without strings being attached.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Harvey?
I can, I can tell you, in reading through these, I read through them today, looking for something that might be, you know, uh, important or, but anyway, the thing is, there, there wasn't a lot of, a lot of sympathy, like, I don't know sympathy, but, affordable housing was a mention, but then if you looked at, at, a little deeper into it, was mentioned, that it should be done, but then it wasn't really one of the most important, uh...
And that's one of the problems they're having, it's, that, that's a common theme throughout the state. So that's why they're running into problems, because every town has that same mentality.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I...
And the, and the cities have taken it hard.
Or you've had how much, well, how much has Ware grown, not much, population-wise?
Well, since when?
We're at nine thousand?
Probably nine to ten, huh?
Ten thousand?
Yeah, but we've been pretty steady for years.
Just said ninety-two hundred roughly.
They grew a lot in the eighties, just about double.
They grew a lot in the nineties, too.
Double, double.
Early nineties, yeah.
I, I, I can't see, I, I mean, I can't, what would affordable housing, what would it be in Ware? You, I can't understand what it would be. How would you get it affordable? Affordable to who? What's affordable?
Well, that's what the phase two and three are for, once you figure this out. I mean, some of it, some of the money for phase two or three is gonna go for, um, towns or, or nonprofits to fund building affordable housing in certain towns. That's what phase two and three are gonna come to, and, and they're gonna say, this is the number you gotta hit.
You gotta hit?
Yeah, it's gonna be a legislative thing.
Well...
They're doing studies now.
Let's see.
For sale, it's gonna be X, not X plus two, X.
Right.
Not X plus ten percent, it's gonna be X.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, you know, government telling you how much you can sell a, a place for, so...
If it's deemed affordable, yes.
They're not gonna tell, the contractors...
They're gonna tell me when I can sell my house.
No, the only thing they're doing, the, the nonprofits, because they're, they're the only ones gonna be able to build it, because they're not after, they're not... The nonprofit being tacked onto it.
Oh, there's profits on there.
Oh, there's profit.
Right, but we, we know that, but the nonprofits is less than...
Yeah, people in the nonprofit are getting paid.
Right.
And, you know, the...
The people, the people that work for the nonprofit have a right to get paid, they're volunteers, and that's what the, that's what, you have to cover that, but...
There'll be people doing it, other nonprofits.
Yeah, and just the cost of, of, of driving back and forth, not that everybody does it, but in Ware, a lot of people do.
Oh, the, the community, the cost of living here, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah.
But that's, um, but for the people that work in town, that isn't a big cost, as for the people that... The COVID taught, taught us all one thing, remote work works.
Well, depends on what you do.
Depends who, depends on the person, too.
Yes.
Can't turn a wrench remotely.
Oh, no, 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 that, I mean, for, for the right jobs, it, it's a viable option.
Sure.
And there's a lot of low-paying jobs that that works in, like insurance coders, medical bill coders, I mean, all that kinda stuff.
Health insurance call cen, in, health insurance customer service call centers, like, you know, and healthcare.
Yeah.
Two hundred people went remote during COVID.
You know, these call centers are getting broken up, cause people work from home.
I work from home two or three days a week.
I know, I know, I couldn't afford to live where I grew up, that's why I'm not that, well, not why I'm not there.
I could afford to live where I grew up.
I would never go, I would never live there, but...
That's another story. I grew up next door.
I thought I didn't wanna live where I grew up, but ultimately I came to a town that's exactly like where I grew up.
And when I grew up next door, there was nine hundred people in town.
Yeah.
I'll see you in the grow.
When my parents bought their house, it was fifty thousand dollars. When it sold after my mother's death, it was nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
My parents paid eighteen thousand for eighty-four acres in a house.
Yeah, but I'd never wanna live where I grew up, ever.
We sold the house for seventy.
Yeah.
Anyway, anything else, Naomi?
Well, I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that motion, she gotta shut up first.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?